Called to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, June the 20th, 2022, and I'll be giving the invocation and I'll recognize Commissioner Kent Herman for the pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you thank you for the blessings that you've given to us in this day. Continue to help Alexander County protect and guide and watch over all of our citizens, employees, and all those who do everything for us each day to protect us and keep us safe. Give us a clear mind to make wise decisions tonight that will move Alexander County forward. Be with each person here as they travel back to their homes to keep it safe and protect each one. I pray for our nation that you'd help us to look back to you. I just pray Psalms 32:12, 33:12 on our nation, Lord, you just guide and direct in all that we do. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I recognize any commissioner for a commissioner's report.
Well, the historic committee took a little trip down to Ardell County, checked out the way they were doing things, and all the committee, the entire committee was able to go. And we spent some time down there with some folks that are experts in preservation. And it turned out real well, got a lot of information, and hope to bring it back to improve what we're trying to do on that committee.
All right. There is another commissioner will move on to adoption of agenda. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda as is.
Second. Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding agenda? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, no one there. Okay, at this time I enter into item number one, and a public hearing for the Board of Commissioners approval of a tax exempt loan from First Community Bank to Stony Point Volunteer Fire Department. Recognize Mr. Scotty Abernathy, Stony Point Fire Chief. I think he's here tonight. If you'll come forward, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the public hearing pertaining to the Board of Commissioners approval of the tax exempt loan for, from, from First Community Bank to Stony Point Volunteer Fire Department.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Carries unanimously. Come on up, sir. That way everybody can hear you and out there in radio land and everywhere else, you know.
This approval that y'all give there tonight for a, for a tax exempt loan for a 2024 Pierce Sabre fire truck will, we'll go, we'll probably take delivery of it about April or May of next year. And it'll be the first time that we've bought a truck since 2008. Something, we used to buy a truck every, about every 10 years we had a truck that was 20 years old. And I mean, I know that don't seem like that they're that old, but they got a lot of, the mileage is low, but the mileage is hard. It's hard miles at three o'clock in the morning when it's 20 degrees and they're cranked up, stuff like that. But it'll be, the truck will be built in Florida. It'll be, like I said, a 2024. It'll have a 750 gallon of water on it. It'll have a 1,500 gallon minute hail pump. And the truck's going to come in right at 600,000. That's what the truck will come in at. That's, that's not cheap, but that's not the most expensive truck neither. But I do, I do appreciate everything that y'all have done. I appreciate what you've done here a month or so ago for Stony Point.
Speaking for commissioners, we appreciate what you do and what your men do, you know, far as, you know, talking about age of truck. I know probably everyone in here knows when you have an old car, you know, you get in it, which cars have millions of moving parts. That's why I tell them at my house all the time. With the kids, somebody's calling me, Dad, my car won't crank. I need a battery. I need a tire. I need the gas or something. But if we can help to get you to where you need to go, when that phone rings with the call, that's what, that's what we're looking for is to keep it.
Everything in the fire service, trucks, equipment in general, I mean, it's went out the roof. It's, it's just, it's terrible, terrible high. But we appreciate everything y'all do.
Anybody got any comment, any question? Okay, I entertain a motion. Anyone in the audience have a, it's a public hearing. Anyone have a question or want to speak? You've done a good job, Scotty. You closed them all up. I'll make a motion that we close public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this, this loan for the Stony Point Fire Department's tax exempt loan to purchase their fire truck.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If none, okay, vote in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. You got your truck. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, public hearing for approval of road name Apple Mountain Way. And I recognize county manager, Mr. Rick French at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we need to open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Make a motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We're in public hearing.
Thank you. Tonight, we're here to do a road name, Apple Mountain Way. It's off Lenny's Mountain Road. It meets all the criteria for the road, road request, and it meets the regulations. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. But again, it's changing road number, and there's a number on the left-hand side to Apple Mountain Way.
All right. Anyone in the audience to speak in reference to the public hearing, the road name? Any commissioner? Being none, I'd entertain, I'll make a motion with closed public hearing.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Public hearing's closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the name change to Apple Mountain Way.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Carries unanimously. Moving on to item number three, Via Health PowerPoint Presentation Update, and I'll recognize Zach Shepard, and he's the Relations Regional Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I hope you all are doing well tonight. Thank you for letting me come and give you a brief update on some of the things happening at our organization and just taking the opportunity to keep you, you guys up to date on what's happening. And that's just one of the commitments that we have. This may be some new information, maybe some stuff that you've already heard, maybe just an overview of some stuff, but hopefully there, there's also some, some new things in there that we've not brought before you before, and we'll do the best we can with giving you an update. Okay, so here's just another overview of the new LME MCO map and kind of where everything stands now. And as you can see, our consolidation with Cardinal brought us an extra nine counties that are over a little bit more in the Piedmont area. Okay. And then Via's regional assignments. So we have split our regions up in four separate regions, and we've split those up based on geographic location and on population. So these four regional assignments kind of clustered together some of our counties and that are close together geographically, but also to keep the populations consistent across the regions. And then here's the breakdown of those regions and the counties that make those regions up. As you can see, there is one outlier there with, in regards to population. That's region one. Those seven counties are our old smoky, smoky mountain, seven counties, and those, those folks tend to work, work together on a lot of things, and that we felt it was best to keep that region together, grouped together. But everybody else's populations in the region, they're pretty consistent across the board. And as you can see, Alexander County is part of our region three. Okay. And then here's just a overview of our alternative board structure, all of our four regions. This kind of gives more of a voice to the communities and lets a lot more people be heard and give voice to our board of directors. And then here's the composition for the consolidated board of directors. Okay. Then here's our membership. As you can see, from Alexander, Chairman Reese and Mr. French are represented on region three. Okay. And then here's our governing board of directors as well. There are two, two members from each region that are appointed to our governing board of directors. Okay, and I also wanted to talk a little bit with you tonight about the proposed Child and Family Specialty Plan with the Department of Health and Human Services. Give you a quick overview about what that means and what that is, and also talk to you about the LME MCO's position on that proposal and some concerns that we have. So the current proposal states that the Child and Family Specialty Plan will be a single statewide plan. So this would mean that one entity, one central entity would cover the entire state's Child and Family Specialty Plan. And currently, only a standard plan or tailored plan can bid to operate this. And there's been talk about needed changes to shift the launch timeline for this plan. Okay. And with, with some of the recent proposed changes, this would add a, a significant amount of people to the population that could be served under this plan. So as you can see over here to the left was the initial design for eligible populations, covering mainly children and youth in foster care. But now with this additional proposal, it would bring in parents, guardians, custodians, siblings, and family members that are receiving CPS in-home services. So that is a huge influx of people eligible under this new plan that's being proposed. Okay. So here's some of the benefits of this Child and Family Specialty Plan. And, you know, it would, it is, the intent is to focus on those populations that have a higher need and, and, you know, to make sure that they get, get all the services that they need. So the MCOs have, have been discussing this Child and Family Specialty Plan for some time, and, and we've been speaking with our partners, our stakeholders, and certainly we want to bring this to our boards of commissioners and talk to them about our concerns and what we feel like is, is, you know, red flags about this plan. So first off, we would, we would oppose a statewide waiver just because it, it really would take away what we've already built in a lot of our communities and with our DSS partners. You know, we've, we've done this for many years. We've worked on these relationships for many years and built and strengthened these relationships. And I think that I can speak for a lot of our communities where our DSS partners feel comfortable coming to us and working with us. And, you know, we've made a commitment to our DSS offices to be available and to do everything that we can to help out and be a good partner. This would potentially change that. That would look differently under this statewide plan, where we wouldn't be working necessarily directly with the DSS offices on these high-risk populations for, for kids in foster care. So that would, would essentially take that relationship away. This, again, will have a huge impact on the population served that would have typically been served under the tailored plan. This will be a significant number of people and members that can be served under this new plan. It, it also creates undue administrative burden with additional demands to, to work with another waiver vendor. It's another person, another entity that is being thrown into the mix to manage these, these services. And also, we're, we feel that the timing is too soon. We have certainly been working diligently over the past couple of years preparing for the tailored plan, which is scheduled to roll out in December of this year. And this is just another thing to consider when there's a lot of planning going on, a lot of moving parts right now, and we feel like that it, it really would not be built well if it was done so quickly and under so much other strain that's going on at the state level. It's just a lot going on at once right now. I think that's all I have. Yes, thank you. Questions for me? I know that I kind of threw a whole lot out there, maybe some new information that you might need to digest.
I just, this, I know the answer to the question, but just for everyone else. This is something the state is wanting to do. It's not strictly from Via Health.
Yes, sir.
The tailored plan is what y'all are putting into process, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes. We, we are working, we have been awarded the tailored plan. So we will roll out the tailored plan regardless of the, the direction that the department takes here. But it would change the way that our tailored plan looks and, and the composition of our members. I will also say that the MCOs have recently announced a, an initiative that we're moving forward with. All six MCOs have, they, they have undertaken an initiative that will essentially streamline services for people moving in between catchments and outside of our catchment into other catchments. That's, there's been a lot of the concern raised with this state plan is, is folks say, well, it's, it's difficult when you move from one catchment MCO to another catchment MCO. And so the MCOs, we've, we've heard that, we've recognized that, and we've made a commitment across the state that now it is going to be streamlined. When children have to move from our catchment to another catchment, if they're having to move to the coast, we're going to make that streamlined across the MCOs where there's not so much red tape and, and hurdles to jump through.
Okay, thank you.
Zach, one, one question. On the CFSP eligible population, when it says additional, you know, CFSP eligible populations, Medicaid and NC Health Choice enrolled, parents, guardians, custodians of children, youth, and foster care. I'm assuming those, those adults also have to qualify for, you know, Medicaid and/or, you know, Medicaid and/or NC Health Choice?
So I'm not really sure about the qualifications, how that would look at, at this time. You know, the proposal saying that, you know, these parents and guardians that have children or youth in foster care, that will essentially qualify them.
But I mean, just, I mean, I'm just thinking, because as a, as a parent of foster children and adopted children through foster care, you know, there's nothing about myself or my wife that would qualify us for, how should I say this, you know, Medicaid or North Carolina Health Choice, because, you know, we, we have private health insurance. And I'm just sitting here going, does that, you know, does that include, you know, does that include people like us who don't need it?
Right.
Yeah. You know, I mean, I mean, I don't mean it's bad, but, you know, you know, we don't need that service, although, hey, sure, great, super, free healthcare. But, you know, but I just, I don't see, you know, like with myself, I just, I don't see, I don't see that as, as a positive.
Sure. I think Mr. Mitchell might have.
I think, Zach, this is a moving target. And so what, because they were just talking about this in a meeting in Asheville. And the state doesn't have all of the parameters laid out, but the way it's written now, the eligibility, the trigger point are those guidelines. So if you're a caretaker of a foster child, you would automatically be eligible. Normally, in other Medicaid programs, when there's a trigger that makes you eligible, there's also a way to opt out. So, or Medicaid could be the last payer for us. So you could be duly enrolled. So you could have private insurance, and then Medicaid would come and pay the copays and that kind of thing, if it's written like other Medicaid programs. So answer your question, if you meet these criteria, that is the eligibility trigger. So if it, but it would take legislative action. I mean, so that's what Zach is saying. Like, there's no way, this is my opinion, there's no way they can get all of this done in the timeframe that they've laid out. But through Medicaid transformation and all of this stuff, we've been, we've stopped being surprised about what the state does. But later on, we'll talk about Medicaid expansion. But I think all of this kind of builds on to Medicaid expansion. They are expanding Medicaid piece by piece by piece, and I really think it's coming. But if it stays like they're proposing, those would be your eligibility triggers. So income and stuff would go out the door, and you would be eligible based on this criteria. My understanding as of today. It's weak, that could be different, but.
Which, to me, is crazy. I mean, to me, is crazy, because, you know, sure, everybody likes free stuff. But, I mean, in, in the real world, those of us that are blessed enough to take care of ourselves, why in the world would the state and/or, you know, any other government entity say, hey, we'll pay, pay for this for you? That does, it just, that makes sense to me.
I understand.
But I just, you know.
It's the state saying, right now.
You know, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anybody else?
And I will say, if, if the board wants to consider it, we would certainly welcome any kind of support that you all might want to put towards our position with this plan. We've been gathering some support from our other boards of commissioners as well that we're sending to the department to let them know the community's thoughts about this, this plan. And I know Mr. French knows, knows a lot about this. He, he has kept up with this, being a part of our boards, so.
Well, I think for myself, speaking for the others, we would love to continue what we have with, you know, with Via Health. So anything that we can do to support y'all, we will get with Mr. French, and we can, you know, get that worked out and get it to y'all.
Perfect, perfect. If you have any other questions, concerns, feel free to reach out.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, a request to sponsor SERAP funds for stream debris removal update. And I recognize Ms. Pamela Bowman, Alexander County Soil and Water Administration Specialist. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Excuse me. So we've been talking about the stream debris removal for a little while now. This is the last, well, I shouldn't say last, for now. This is the latest amount or set pot of money that we have, so that we've received from the state. The STRAP program stands for the Stream Rehabilitation Assistance Program. So if you all recall, I have to keep going back through which ones for which, but this, this pot of money was legislation the state put into place this last, last year, and we, we were asking for 2.4 million for stream debris removal within the county. And it's, doesn't have to be from a particular storm. A lot of it came from our flooding back in November of 2020, but it could be from any stream debris. But we asked for that 2.4 million in March of 2022 from the Division of Soil and Water. That's who's funding this. The Soil and Water Office has been awarded $384,805. So these funds have to run through a local sponsor in order to be paid out, to pay for the construction of the debris removal, and if we have any administration through other agencies to help do the paperwork and everything, that has to be paid for, and then we can turn it back in for 100% reimbursement from the state. So it's similar to what we've done or what we're in the process of doing with our EWP and our other state emergency money. And so tonight, I'm, I'm asking if the county would sponsor that amount for the STRAP program. Anybody had any questions?
This has been kind of an ongoing thing.
Yeah.
Is this going to be enough to probably take care of?
No.
You don't know.
No. So I'm glad, I mean, that you asked. That's why I said, well, we asked for 2.4 million, and that was just from the ones that signed up. We had about 35 or 40 people sign up, and we did a kind of a short, short window because it was a fast process. There's, you know, been a whole lot more folks that have asked for assistance since then. So no, it's not really touching a lot of it, but it, this will probably do three to four sites. So it's getting some of the worst ones, but it's still going to be, you know, not, not getting a lot of it.
Band-aid for just.
Yeah. But the, the state's, the, the Division of Soil and Water across the state, their hope is that if we can spend this money fast, and it's gone out to, you know, lots of counties, lots of soil and water districts across the state, if we can spend this money fast within this year, basically, that then we can go back, they can go back to the legislator and say, we need this much more.
More.
Right. And look how fast we spend it, how, how quickly we got it taken care of. So that's, that's the goal.
Can, can we get a copy of the ranking sheet?
The, the order of the, you can, we can do a copy of like the criteria, yes, that was, how people were ranked, how they were, yes. The, the names, I don't know that I can share the names in the order of, like what sites were where, but definitely the, the criteria that was used, yes, for the ranking.
Criteria, what, what, how it ranked to get to come first, or what order it come in?
Yeah, definitely.
Well, in my opinion, 384,805 is better than nothing.
Yes, exactly.
And if, if it's going to be, you know, reimbursed at 100%, I mean, that's a, that's a no-brainer.
And it's going to help the people that are on that list.
You know, it's not going to get it done, but it's at least something.
Maybe a while, but we will get it back, I guess.
Eventually.
Any other questions? Yes, I would entertain a motion. We need to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, the award of 384,805 to the Alexander County Soil and Water Conservation District with the understanding that it will be reimbursed at 100%.
with the understanding that it will be reimbursed at 100% after being spent on, um, stream debris removal.
All right. Have a motion. A motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Moving on to item number five, Hyperreach Services Agreement. I recognize Mr. Mark Earl, Alexander County Fire Marshal, Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you tonight about the county's emergency notification system. As of now, OnSolve, or Code Red, serves as the company that manages our notification system. Prior to the retirement of the former Public Services Director, he was in negotiations with a company called Hyperreach, which provides the same service as Code Red does, but it also gives a little more options than what Code Red gives us. It would save the county $1,000 a year. It's, it's a lot more friendly to a user. It's, it's unlimited minutes when it comes to emergency, non-emergency notifications. When we would send out a non-emergency message, then Code Red would actually charge us for that. So that's a good sign for us. One-click social media, just click a button, and it'll come out on all of the social media's county websites. It comes with a smart speaker notification. Those people that has Lexa can get notified. It's not just with the cell phone or landlines. It's a phone-based register. Bad part about it is everybody has to register again. Code Red, who owns the list, will not share it with this company. But once we go with this company, then we will own that data information that's in there.
All right.
So with that being said, I do have some county references. Hiredale uses it, Cleveland County, Birdie County, Dupham County, City of Shelby, they use it. Haven't heard any complaints from any of them about the Hyperreach system, and I would like to recommend that the Board of Commissioners allow Hyperreach to provide the service for our emergency services notification.
Okay, so in your opinion, you think it's just as good or better than what we've got, and it's saving some money, too?
Yeah, saves a thousand bucks.
Yeah, I was just looking here on the one page, it says, "Has the ability to make up to seven attempts and can call 50,030-second messages per hour." So that's.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty quick.
Works pretty fast.
And they will push out weather notifications where Code Red would charge us if we went that route. That's free of charge, that comes with that package. So whoever signs up will be able to get the weather information also.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner? I make a motion to approve Hyperreach Services Agreement. Anything to say?
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, question?
All right.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Jim. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Earl. And moving on to next item of business, the number six, Alexander County 2022, 2023 Budget Ordinance, and I recognize Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the 2223 Budget Ordinance for Alexander County. The general fund is 53,653,167. It leaves the tax rate where it is. It sets all the fire district taxes, which are the same, and it outlines all, everything else for all the different funds, of water funds, solid waste, and so on. And we've had a budget work session and a meeting with the Finance Committee to review. And since we've discussed this in different shapes and forms, I'll be glad to answer any questions. But we, the staff recommends you approve it, approve it as presented.
I think it appears to be a good budget.
Mr. Chairman, should, should we, just for, you know, public information, should we hit a couple of the bigger items, just, you know, publicly to, you know, to say, hey, this is, this is where your money's going, you know, um, which, I mean, I would gladly do that, you know, just kind of breaking, you know, not hitting every single line item, but the bigger items, so people understand, you know, where their, where their tax money's going. Do you mind?
No, if you want to, Commissioner Lell, this is public information also, so.
Right. Just to, to give you, you know, give you some insight, I suppose, and like I say, this is absolute, this is 100% public information, so you're welcome to request a copy of the budget at any time. Kind of our big-ticket items as a county, um, you know, and, and these are not any, in any particular order, but Sheriff's Department, four point, basically 4.2 million dollars. Court facility, $300,000. Detention, 3.4 million dollars. There are also some other things that go along with, with that, you know, that, that same, um, I guess you'd say line item, being, you know, juvenile crime prevention, pre-trial, pre-trial and release, those kind of things. Fire Emergency Services, 1 million and some change. 911 Communications, 1.2 million. Health Department, 3.4 million and some change. Emergency Medical Services, 4.4, 4.4 million and some change. Department of Social Services, 9.2 million and some change. Board of Education, 7.4 million and some change. And I'm not, and I, and I'm not trying to point out any individual, any individual department or, you know, but I just want, I just want everybody to understand, you know, there, and then there are lots of other line items, um, from governing body to Board of Elections to Finance, Tax Office, you know, legal register deeds, maintenance, county garage, forestry, building inspections, soil and water, animal services, medical examiner, recreation, county parks, libraries, senior center, Top Valley Community College. You know, contingencies for, you know, and that's one thing that we had to consider in this current budget, are a few contingencies based on the economy, including fuel cost. You know, we have a contingency, an additional contingency of $100,000 for fuel cost, because we have to make sure there's money to, to fuel ambulances and police cars and county vehicles, and to make sure that, that the county can provide the services that we need for our, you know, for our citizens. But I just, you know, I just wanted to kind of throw this out there as we don't just pick a random number, and we take the budget very seriously. You know, and, and I don't, I don't, you know, I don't want this to sound bad, but I don't know that everybody in Alexander County knows what all goes into the budget, what all the county pays for, what all we, you know, what all we try to be fiscally responsible for, because that's, you know, we understand this is not, this is not our money. This is, this is Alexander County's citizens' money, and we take that very seriously. And I, for one, think this is a, this is a, a good, solid, you know, budget, and a budget is exactly that. If you've had any economics, you know, any economics during your education, a budget is, is exactly that. A budget is, is a target, and budgets, as the year goes on, may change, plus or minus. I had an economics professor that said, if your budget's not enough, you know, if you, if you have a budget and you run out of money, you need to increase your budget. You know, so I just want to say, I appreciate Mr. French and all the departments of the county that have put in a lot of, a lot of work in trying to be fiscally responsible with, with our money, because I'm also a citizen of Alexander County that pays property tax, just like you guys. And, um, and I'm very confident, and, you know, that this is a, this is a good example of fiscal responsibility, and, you know, we can't make everybody happy. We'd love to, but it's just not possible. And we do the best we can with what we have, and hopefully, uh, this budget will work out well for the coming year, and we can make sure that the needs of the community and the needs of the county and its citizens are met.
Thank you, Commissioner Lell. And I agree on that. We, there's been a lot of work went into it, and I thank everyone right now. At even your budget at home, you can see how all the increases have affect everything. And that leads me into the other thing. I think here, I'm sure on the radio, they've been talking about the tax decrease. We have not forgotten that, but it has been tabled until we see what goes on as far as, I kind of say it's more on a national level, that there could be a remedy to these problems, but I haven't seen anything trying to be worked out yet. But I'm still optimistic that, you know, it is going to be taken care of, and that we can come back and, you know, relook that as we go on into the year. So that's why we have our budget amendments, as Mr. Lell said, Commissioner Lell said, and sometimes the budget amendment costs us zero money, but sometimes it does cost us some money. But, you know, we're trying to provide all the services that everyone needs for the best, you know, price that we can, and we ask each department to work within their budget, just as you would at your home, you know, make sure what you spend is what you need to spend, you know, look at those things, combine trips, but, you know, it's kind of hard for the Sheriff's Department to say, well, we're going to put three people in one car, and we'll go catch all of these. They have to go, and they have to have gas, we have to have money to fund that. Same way with EMS. When we make a call, we want the fire trucks going, we want the ambulance to come, so that's, you know, that's where we're at. But I do think the budget is a good budget. I think Mr. French, too, and all the ones who's worked on it. And it's a continued work in progress. We don't just stop. Once it's approved, we're still looking, you know, to see if things can be done better, and if there is, you know, something that can come in under what it's maybe priced Any other, Commissioner?
No, I'm good. I think it's a good budget.
Yeah. I guess we've come down to, I entertain the motion to.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the 2223 budget as presented, uh, tonight. Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. No further discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Jim. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. French. Moving on to our next item, number seven, is what we've just been talking about here. Our Budget Ordinance Amendments, numbers 104 to 109, and I recognize, Jim, you want to read those? Uh, the Recognizer County Manager, Rick French.
To increase the Tax Office, I'm sorry, number 104, is to increase the Tax Office budget for NC DOT fees charged to the county for collecting motor vehicle taxes, based on the year-to-date fees charged and increases needed to cover the remainder of the budget year. It's also to increase the budget for fees required to be remitted to the state based on revenues collected by the Register of Deeds. The budget is being amended based on year-to-date actual experience and estimates for the remainder of the budget year, to increase the public buildings maintenance budget to allow for unexpected repairs at the end of the budget year, to increase the court facility budget for office furniture expenses, and to adjust the general fund revenues based on year-to-date actual experience. Number 105 is to increase detention center budget for estimated expenses for the remainder of the 2122 budget year, and to increase the general fund revenues based on year-to-date actual experience. 106, to increase the DSS budget for home and community care block grant additional funding allocation and increase in local match requirement for housing and home improvement projects, and to budget for client expenses in the DSS Representative Payee Fund, which is a social security program where the county DSS receives and manages money for minor children and certain adults. Some of these funds used for the fiscal year 2022 client expenses were received in prior year, so the disbursements are from fund balance of the general fund. 107 is to increase the fiscal year 22 budget estimates for fines and forfeitures received by the county, which are required to be remitted to the local Board of Education. 108 is to adjust the solid waste fund and landfill closure fund budgets to reclassify the expenses for the transfer station floor-topping project from landfill repairs and maintenance expense to landfill capital outlay expense, and to reverse the $10,000 inter-fund transfer between the two funds, because certain engineering invoices charged to the landfill closure fund are for the solid waste fund and will be reclassified along with other costs for the transfer station floor-topping project. And then number 109 is to increase the general fund and the solid waste fund budgets for the implementation of Government Accounting Standards Board Statement, number 87, also known as GASB 87, which changes the accounting treatment of leases.
And I thank our clerk, Jamie Starnes, for reading that. That was not Rick French. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the amendments 104 through 109 as presented by the clerk to the board.
Second. Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. And being on to item number eight, Board Appointments and Reappointments. Okay, recognize, this time for sure, Rick French, our county manager. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council appoint Roger Haley and Karina Fletcher for two years. Reappoint Alicia Clor for Jennifer Hefner, Douglas Bowman, Carrie Nitsu, David Moose for Rick French, John Presnel, Kim Cowart, Dana Walter, and Mike Millsaps. Plan Zoning Commission, reappoint Koi Reese for three years.
Okay, you've heard the appointments. Any questions on them?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the county, the Alexander County Appointments as read by Ms. French.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to item number nine, Other Business, County Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. The county has been notified that we will receive a rural transportation grant fund for downtown revitalization project, and that is for the old chamber building. We will receive $650,000, and I'll make you a copy of the timeline. We haven't received our official letter yet, but we will receive those funds. Again, we'll see, and the, the grant name is Alexander Housing Our Teachers. That's the name of the project, but it's a rehab project for the old chamber building, so there'll be some changes. So there'll be some changes there, but that'll be a very much needed project. In the grant agreement, there are some things that we'll have to follow. Maintain ownership of the property for 15 years, submit some annual reports, management and oversight of day-to-day activities of the grant project, financial management of the project cost. Again, we're looking for the project to be completed in December of 2024. We'd like to thank our EDC, you know, special thanks to Connie Kincaid for all her work on this project. Also, there's been a couple of questions about fireworks. We have a Alexander County Independent Celebration Concert scheduled for July 16th at Courthouse Park featuring the, on the border, the Ultimate Eagles Tribute Band. And the concert will be from 6:30 to 9:00. At 9:45 at Alexander Central High School, we'll have fireworks. And so again, all that happens on July 16th. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Except something for closed session.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I'm sure everyone will enjoy the fireworks. That's always a, a big event, so it doesn't have to be on exactly July the 4th, so.
Well, everybody be going the week of July the 4th, so next Saturday night.
Well, and, and that's an example of fiscal responsibility because you know what? Fireworks are way more affordable the week after or the week after that.
We can get a discount. That's good.
That's true. You know, and we got Eagles Tribute Band, you know, I got a piece of easy feeling.
That's good. They're very good.
That's right. This time I'd entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as given in your book.
Same move.
Okay, have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will go into the Consolidated Services Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting for June 20, 2022. And any public comment for this meeting?
I don't have any.
This time I'd entertain, I would recognize our, for Public Health Updates, Dorian Maltba, Director of Nursing for Organizational Changes, Policy and Procedure Changes, and Fee Approval and Accreditation Update. And we'll need to vote on some of those things. Y'all come up. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. I am Dorian Maltba, Director of Nursing, here tonight in place of Billy Walker to provide the public health update. As a result of Leanne's retirement, there have been a couple organizational changes at public health. Billy became the interim Health Director on May 1st. And as of last Monday, I'll be moved to the Director of Nursing position.
Congratulations.
The updates we're going to talk about tonight are just information about our manual updates, a proposed change in the header template for our policies and procedures, proposed revision of the Board of County Commissioners Training Program, and we need approval for a lab fee. In addition, we're going to give an accreditation update and provide the state of the county health report. Our program manuals are reviewed and updated annually. This process is nearing completion and the manuals will be ready for signatures on or before July 1st. The major change to our manual this year is just an update of our header template. And this is to incorporate a policy number and accreditation assignment. These additions are just going to make it easier and more user-friendly as we do our next accreditation. And we do need approval for this, this change.
Okay. So this is for the policy procedure?
Yeah, just our header, the old one.
Do each one of them separately, yes, or?
Yeah, I think you probably should just to make sure.
Okay, make a motion that we approve the changes as shown here on the screen.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is, this was in your packet, the Board of County Commissioners Training Update Materials. So included were the new orientation policy and orientation guide, board member orientation checklist, and then an acknowledgement statement to sign once orientation is complete. That's for new board members. And we just need approval for this change.
Okay, make a motion that we approve this change as given in our orientation guide.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And our final item for approval is we need a lab fee approval. Our maternal health agreement addenda with the state requires that we offer serum genetic testing to pregnant individuals. This testing was previously performed by Wake Forest University through a contract with the Department of Health and Human Services, but this is no longer available. So our management team and lab have gotten a price from Quest, which is the outside laboratory we use for labs. Their price is $81.50. Our typical process for fee determination is our cost plus 20%. That would bring the fee for this test to $97.80. Our recommendation is to round up to a flat $100 for this service. And it will be billed to the patient's insurance or if the patient made specified income guidelines would slide to as little as $0 with the cost being absorbed by the health department.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the fee for maternal serum alpha-
For the laboratory test.
Feto protein screening tests of $100.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions about that? Keep being known, I'd entertain a vote, raising your right hand for approval. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you once again.
So now I'm going to turn things over to Kimberly Ednison, our Health Educator, for an accreditation update and the state of the county health report.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. It's a privilege to be here. We are excited to be closing in on our accreditation timeline. As you are aware, it would be, but for the purposes of everybody listening, we were due for a resurvey in 2020. And that process for us in a number of health departments was delayed until this year. So what's normally a four-year process is now going to be a six-year process. And we, we held, we received our letter notifying us that we are in that cycle on February 28th. The, we had an introductory training cycle meeting in June, uh, meeting, March this 22nd. And on June 1st, we had to meet the good faith effort, which was 80% or more of the information due in the new dashboard process to the North Carolina Local Health Department Accreditation Program. We hit 92% that day and it's more than that today. So we are moving right along exactly where we should be on that trend. We'll have additional data submissions and program review between now and July 31st. And then August 30th and 31st, they will open the dashboard back to us and say, okay, here are a few things we would like to request in terms of records they want to see that they don't ask for until about two days before they come. And we will host them here for a hybrid reaccreditation survey. They will be here, it'll be a mix of onsite and remote. And they'll be here one day, September 1st, and that will wrap up. And then shortly after that, we will receive the program letter and follow-up. Any questions on that? We'll of course be in touch and keeping you updated and doing a lot together to prepare for that.
Lot of things going on, good information.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the work out there for us.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, one question. Do y'all know how the COVID numbers are going in the county right now?
I just did the update of that and I can look it up and tell you it was 10, it was 10,000 and I want to say 700, but let me look and I'll tell you, I'll give you that number. Is that correct?
Okay, good.
And the, the vaccination rates are about the same. We had one person in the hospital and no increase in mortality in the last week.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the work and the report.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
We also have our state of the county health report.
Yeah.
That is part of the accreditation process. You all know, but for the purposes of those who are listening, we do this annually between community health assessments. And so it's our privilege to present the 2021 State of the County Health Report to you as well. As I said, it's required annually for all the years between the community health assessments. The last community health assessment, as you know, is 2018 and we are due to begin opening up that process later this year for a 2022 assessment. The State of the County Health Report reviews progress on priorities that were made each year through that period that were identified in the community health assessment. And as part of the public information for that, it is required, there are some steps required. We submitted our State of the County Health Report, or the SACH, to the state on February 8th and received our notice of approval April 1st and our letter May 25th. And it's presented here, it's emailed to the Healthy Alexandrians team and it is published online for public information on the health department's website. The demographics, health priorities, and target populations have changed very little since 2018. There's no surprise there and that's all in the, in the State of the County Health Report. The target populations, just as a reminder, were adults and children in need of mental health services, adults and children in need of substance abuse treatment, individuals with limited transportation resources, individuals with low income or who are uninsured, and individuals who are non-English speaking. Priorities that have been made since those, the health priorities and progress on those things since the 2018 were established. The 2018 priorities were healthy lifestyles, mental health, and substance use disorder. And we have made progress despite the fact that COVID kind of interrupted that process for the last several years. On the mental health priority, we were able to train 14 staff at the Health Department in QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer. It is a program that helps to identify and identify risk and open dialogue and reduce risk of suicide and intentional self-harm. We also held a class with the seniors center in a partnership on May 20th there for a target population that we know we have seniors who are at risk, particularly isolated through COVID. And it says there are 12 seniors and two staff members, but it was actually 14 seniors and two staff members were trained at that meeting as well. We created and utilized a multimedia program, five steps to, or five tips to prevent overdose as part of the campaign for substance use disorder. And you can see the, the multimedia outreach for 2021 there as part of the presentation. And then in our key priorities under healthy lifestyles, we were able to introduce a new initiative as part of a grant with UNC Healthcare and a study that was funded by the, by the CDC that is called MedSouth. It is an introduction of the MedSouth, Med, the Mediterranean lifestyle and the Southern lifestyle and diet. It's designed to work on any budget. And it, we are one of the sites that is a bilingual site. We were allowed, because we had such strong recruitment, 120% of capacity and we anticipate at least 100% capacity will graduate that program. We have people who are finishing the initial stages and moving into the six-month maintenance now. The emerging issues that were most significant, obviously COVID was the emerging healthcare issue in terms of mortality, morbidity, and overall health. In addition, as you know, it brought along employment challenges, food availability, and affordability challenges with school and online classes, missing disinformation. So it was the significant emerging issue. Paused or discontinued efforts since the 2018 Community Health Assessment. Our Behavioral Health Program is on pause while we are still seeking a licensed clinical social worker for that program. But it is posted, as you know, and so it's only on pause for that purpose. And looking ahead to 2022 and beyond, our accreditation for this year, expansion of the COVID vaccine availability to additional groups as those continue to roll out from the government. And our MedSouth Lifestyle Program, we have every indication that that will be a continualable thing and that we, we are already seeing interest in other people participating in that program in its next iteration. Any questions?
I noticed on there one thing with the, with the Health Department, mental health.
Yes.
How are we approaching mental health and what are we doing in conjunction with Social Services and other departments on making sure that the people in our county are aware of the mental health problems that are with us every day? And I mean, we, we have to be at a loss if we want to continue to fool ourselves that mental health is here and it's things that's causing problems. And how are we going to address the mental health problem in Alexander County in the next year or right now? That needs to be addressed to make sure we get out and educate, especially our young people. That's, that's bothering a lot of people right now. And, and I think that we really look, need to look at mental health before we do other things because of the mental health problems that are triggered. And I mean-
You're right, it's extremely significant.
I, I want to know what we're going to do and what plans we have going forward.
That is a very significant healthcare issue and that's, that's a great question. I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer that for you tonight, but I can tell you that we do an immense amount of education through our social media, through our website. We are actively recruiting for that licensed clinical social worker to start that program back up. And we participate in, we just relaunched the Substance Use Prevention Coalition that was on interim disruption due to COVID. And so there are, as we know, some overlaps there and that's helping to identify some programmatic opportunities. I would let Billy speak to a little bit more long-term plans and that later on if that is all right with you.
I mean, that's fine. My, my, my whole point coming here is the fact that you're seeing so many young people. And I think it's, I think with the COVID, being out of school, being away from social life and those things, it's a contributing factor to, factor to our mental health problem in this country. And, and I would really like to see our Health Department and some of our other people, put more, other entities in the county, put more of an emphasis on that and to reach out to these young people and, and, and middle-class older, it doesn't matter. Anybody can have mental health problems. And the shame comes when you don't ask for help. That's the shame of mental health. There's no shame in asking for assistance.
That's right.
That's very, very important is to ask for help. And I just really feel like with everything's been going in our country, they could blame it on there what they want to, but in my opinion only, and it's just me, I just feel like that we haven't done enough to reach out and to educate. And, you know, everything we're doing is fine. I'm not, you know, I think the report's good, but I think we've got to really make a strong push through our Health Departments and other entities to reach out to these young people, especially on mental health. Because you cannot isolate people away from one another. Funny things are going to happen and they're not funny. Don't get me wrong, I mean, they're, they're, they're bad things that can happen when you isolate people and do not let them have that, that, that human contact. I mean, we're mammals. We're used to being in, we want to be around people. We want to be in congregates, so I just hope that with your report and everything and the things coming down the line, I would like to see, you know, I would like to see our Health Department and, and our Social Services and what other divisions that we have in here in this county. I would really like to see them do some more education on mental health, especially for our younger people because I don't want to see anything happen to anybody. I want to make sure that people have the information- to see anything happen to anybody. I want to make sure that people have the information out there and so that we can do whatever we need to do to assist these folks in getting the necessary help they need to get.
That is one of the positives too, when we're able to find that licensed clinical social worker and start that program back up at the health department, because it also addresses adults and youth. And that, that is a critical piece as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next report will be Kristy Hunt from the Senior Center Director. Uh, thank you.
Hi. Okay, well, I want to talk about mental health, something I didn't add to our slides. We actually do have, VIA Health does come to the seniors center once a month to present. They do a variety of topics. It's really good on mental, mental health. And then we advertise too for their virtual classes. So we're trying. Our seniors do participate and they do enjoy those classes. They like to know. One of the biggest ones for the seniors is the medication and abuse of medication. You'd be surprised. And it's, it's very interesting for them to take part in. Other than that, we really like to party. You know, we, we really have done good. They are really liking their Bingos and their birthday lunches back.
Well, that's good.
They're really enjoying those. And we are having lots of good hosts to come out. We do have several people, our community is really great about donating to us, and they will come out and host Bingos. And so that they do have prizes with every game. As you see there, we made a toilet paper cake too to give away, so that was great. They, they're just really enjoying it. Medicare savings, that was as of whenever I made the PowerPoint, the 46,000. I've actually had another 34,000 just this month in savings. So it's always good. I know open enrollment is our big time, but we do continue to do Medicare throughout the year. We have people new to Medicare, or people that's having problems, or people that's getting scammed. And so we have to make sure we address all that. We are having a scam seminar. Anna Almore from the Secretary of State Department is coming on July 28th. I really hope that we have a lot of participation in that because we are having a lot of scams. So, okay. Senior Celebration was held on Fri- Friday, May 27th. They had so much fun. We had a ball. They enjoyed it. We partied hard. Western Piedmont was there, and they were, they had brought 200 box lunches from Honey Baked Ham for everyone. So we had about 100 people to participate, so they each got a meal and they got to take one home. It was a lot of fun. It was
Good deal.
We've had a lot of good feedback from that. They said they really enjoyed it, and it was just so great to be able to be together again and get to do that. So, lots of good things. We actually done a fun walk too, and you know, got to get a little exercise in there. Participation is up. We have done really good. I'm hoping it stays that way, or increases. Of course, it's the summer months, so people have gardening to do and vacations. So hopefully we don't see too big of a decrease there. But all three of our centers, our participation is up. We did have the, the Board of Elections had all of the voting there at the seniors center this year, which looks really good. We've put the numbers in there, and it seemed to go well. We, we shared the building, so we were able to keep the seniors' activities for the most part. We still, we had a couple of classes we couldn't have, but we still done good. We got along. Any questions?
Good report. I thank you for what you're doing. And just as Commissioner Yoder said, for mental health, getting together, you know, and having some fun, that's always good for, I don't care if you're a child, an adult, or a senior or what, you know, we need to, you know, enjoy life, so.
We, we have, we have a really good time. And that is, the biggest part is the, just getting together and being with other people. It is, it's amazing. When you talk about young people, my daughter was home. She'll be a senior in high school next year, but I mean, she went to school this year for her junior year, but for her sophomore year, she was home. She done virtual learning. And she is a big people person. She is very, very, you know, social. And I saw the biggest downturn in her, that she had to stay home until she could get vaccinated. And so that was the thing. And now she's right back at it. And she actually helped at our senior celebration to give out T-shirts and, and all that good stuff. So seniors enjoyed her. So I was glad she was able to help too and kind of put forth some effort.
Well, I, I tell my, our older children, the word "party" can be used as a noun or a verb. You know, and as a dad, I prefer it used as a noun, like I am going to a party, you know.
Used it as a verb.
But I would say at seniors center, we're using it as a verb.
Yeah, they, they really did.
Which means, hey, we're going to party. And that's great.
I really hope next year that I can get you all to get to come to the, the senior celebration. It was, I was a little late inviting you this year, but next year I really hope that you come, because it's, it was so much fun. They were tossing beach balls, I mean, really, and balloons and everything in the audience. And it was, it, they just really enjoyed it. I have lots of good pictures if anybody wants to see later. All right. Any other questions?
I'd just say try to keep all those crazies under control.
I try. I try. You know, they don't call me trouble for nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, our Department of Social Services recognized Mr. Thomas Mitchell, the director. Thanks for coming.
So just to follow up, you know, I'm envious of Kristy, because she's up there going, "Oh, let's party." And I'm just trying to look out my window.
Somebody has to work, you know.
I can be a little envious, but we do, I sometimes get to take a walk, walk and kind of see their party from a distance. But we did go over there on the 27th, some of the DSS, and stayed about 30 minutes. We had fun, and we definitely got back to work. So we kind of went in, listened to a couple tunes, and then we came back to work. But let me follow up with what Commissioner Yoder was saying. This is not on the slide. But I, I thank you for bringing that up. It is, it is a, an issue, and actually something that we've been talking about internally over the last week or so. But, you know, I think that surrounding mental and behavioral health is a real good place where social services and health department can work real close. Because the health department has a lot of prevention specialists. By nature, they, they are in the prevention business. DSS is very reactive. So we react after things occur. That's just the nature of what we do. Health department is, is proactive in, in working with prevention. So I think that there's some real good areas, especially since you guys are consolidated, that we can work together. So that's on my list to call Billy and see where we can partner, because I agree. You know, the Naval Health Services is a, is a deficit in, in Alexandria County. We don't have enough services. You know, I didn't realize Zach was going to be here, because I just got back from vacation. So, but, you know, that's something that Zach and I talked about. At Lent, one day, I kind of held him hostage in my office for three or four hours. So he probably, he probably won't ever come to see me again. But there's a lot of things, you know, that we talked about that this county needs, and I think that VIA can help. Social services can come around and, and, and do some things, and we can, the health department. So I think with everything we have, I think we can, we can build something. So that is something that we are definitely working on. And just a couple of things that we've done with VIA, I think that's, that's helping, you know, they, they come to a weekly staffing now that we have DSS on Monday when we've got difficult cases. And so that's helped. They are working on getting another, and I can't remember what the position y'all followed. They're working on hiring somebody that can come actually to DSS and be in our building for two days a week, we'll start with, to help our social workers out with those high, high, high cases. So we'll start with two days a week, I think, is what Zach and I talked about, and just see what the utilization is. So we're working on some things that I think will, will be very beneficial.
Sounds good.
So before we get to the slides, I just wanted to point out that this is, this is my first time being at one of these consolidated meetings. I came, joined the county March 28th. So something new that we will be providing is this statistical report. So I don't know if you guys have been used to seeing this or something similar, but you'll get this each time. And there are some missing numbers, just because the agency has not been collecting them. But starting July 1st, we will be collecting all of these numbers. So in August, you will start seeing July's numbers. And I don't want to bore you with lots of data, but I think the data is important. So you guys will get this in advance, and if you have questions about it, you know, you can ask me at the meetings, ask me anytime. But this is all of the data that, that is coming through the agency. And so if there's certain things you want to highlight, I'd be happy to do that. But I didn't want to spend 30 minutes just screaming numbers to you. This way you can just kind of take it and, and digest it all around. So, vacancy, I think the last time, you know I brought my chart back. I think the last time Jamie and I set it up, we had it up right there. I'm excited to show you all this. This is the second time you'll see it.
Thomas, do you want me to hold it while you go to the mic? Chad can't hear you.
Sorry.
No way everybody can hear you. That'd be good.
So on our org chart, the last time y'all saw that, you remember all the yellow that was on there that represented the vacancies. And we were at about 23% the last time y'all saw that. I think on there now, there's six vacancies left. That represents about seven or eight percent vacancy rate. So we are really working hard to fill our positions. And that's really great news. So this has, the staff tell me this is as fully staffed as they have been in the last three years. So this is as close to being fully staffed that they have been in the last three years. So I'm super excited about that. Hopefully the trend will continue. Recruitment's difficult right now, but we, we're getting some good applicants. And so hopefully next time, my goal is to have two or less yellow stickers on there the next time I bring that to you. And so I just wanted you guys to get a chance to look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. All right. So foster care. Jamie, I'm sorry, I do have another.
Don't you really? Okay.
So y'all, y'all know this by now, and I'm a visual person. So if you aren't visual, I apologize.
I like pictures. That's good.
That might have to be closer, but I wanted y'all to kind of see this. And the reason it's not on a slide is because it's, it's constantly changing. So before I came here, I knew, I know that foster care recruitment is a, is a hot button for you guys. And we have made, before I came here even, there, there was a lot of progress that's been made as far as foster care recruitment, making sure those MAP classes are being done. And I think we did away with that billboard. I don't think I've seen it. It's not in town, is it? The billboard's gone, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because it wasn't doing any good. So, you know, because that's not how you recruit foster parents. You recruit foster parents by going out into the community. But anyway, that map represents the green, the green pins are where children are being removed. The pink pins are current foster parents. So this is one of the first things that I had staff do when I got there. And that, this tells a story that we, the, the majority of the children that are being removed are in the town of Taylorsville. And you notice there are no foster parents in the town of Taylorsville. So we need to work on that. The bulk of our foster parents are down in Bethlehem. So the, the, but that's, that's also the area where the least removals are happening. So it's not always a one-to-one, but you need foster parents where your children are being removed. Because one of the goals, the first goal is to keep children in Alexander County. We need to kind of keep our kids in our county. If we can keep our kids in our county and in their school, that's life-changing for those kids. Because if you remove them from their home and their school, a lot of times they lose their church network, they lose their social network at school. And going from the town of Taylorsville to Bethlehem can be like going to a different country. I mean, it real, it's a total different vibe. Or going from being removed from Bethlehem to going to Stony Point or Vash Thai is the same thing. So, you know, each area has its own attitude and, and, and vibe. So, you know, the goal is really to keep those kids as close to their removal as possible. So that's something that we will really be working on. So we, hopefully we'll bring this to you. I don't know if it'll be the next quarter or the quarter after that. We can hopefully see some significant changes with those pink, pink pins, where we can have more foster parents. So that's something that we're working on. The other thing that I'll be talking to Zach about is we currently don't have any foster parents who are trained for therapeutic. We don't have any therapeutic foster families in Alexander County. We need to fix that. So we have 20 to 25% of our kids that are therapeutic. All of them are born outside of Alexander County. And so we really need to work on that. And part of it is education, but as DSS, we can't license therapeutics. So I need to work with VIA to figure out how we get some therapeutic foster families in, in Alexander County. Next one. So one of the things that struck me when I came to work here was when I was talking to Gary over at Communications, and his last name escapes me, but the 911 director.
Greg.
Greg Foster. Greg, yeah. Did I say the wrong name?
Gary.
Okay. Greg. So he told me that he thinks about 25% of the county is a dead zone for cell phones. And given, depending on what carrier you have. So we have social workers that go into these dead zones all the time, and they are removing children sometimes and have no way of communicating that they need help. So that's an issue. So I talked to him about what could we do to remedy that. And then he told me the price of how much it costs to get a radio in a car. And after I picked myself up off the floor, I thought, well, we've got to do something else. Because he says about 10 grand to outfit a car with a radio, like a system like a police car. But they also don't have an available channel. So looking around, it seems like buying a few satellite phones is probably going to be our best option. And they would be like a check-in, check-out process. So we have that figured in our, in our new budget that y'all just approved, to buy three to five satellite phones. And when they go in these dead areas like Vash Thai, I think there's Stony Point, it's got some dead zones, they could take the phone with them. And that way, if they are in a life-threatening situation, they would have access to call somebody. The minutes are extremely expensive on a satellite phone. So you get like a 10-minute package for, I think it's $30, $30 or $40. And so, you know, it would only be for emergency use only. There are some texting devices that you can buy that work off a satellite. So we're looking at that too. So we will go with the, the least expensive, most accessible means for our staff. The other thing that we'll do, right now, we have, staff use their personal cellphone. And so some of them have T-Mobile, some have Sprint, Verizon, Western Carolina. And depending on what service they have, they have different, different coverages depending on the service they have. So in, in our budget, we do have in there where we can buy county cell phones for them. It will be Verizon, and I'm hearing Verizon doesn't work. Like it's, they say that Western, what's the, Carolina West is the best for coverage is what I was told. But our, the county contract, I think, is with Verizon. So all of the, we would know where all of the workers have coverage and where they don't. That will help us decide when they need to take the satellite phone with them or when they don't. So the expense is not going to be that much difference because we're paying them a $35 stipend now to use their personal phone. The service for Verizon is $50. So we would be paying $50 instead of 35. We don't get any reimbursement on the 35, but we would get some reimbursement on the 50. So by the time we get reimbursed, we may actually come out a little bit better than we're coming out now as far as we're coming out now as far as paying for reimbursement. Also, we would not have to pay anything for the phone, because you get whatever iPhone is free, I think it's eight right now, that's free with the plan. So we wouldn't have to buy any devices, assuming we could get thirty-five cell phones on the slow boat from China, you know, that we could get thirty-five. I don't know if we can get our hands on thirty-five now or not, but we'll try. The only thing I want to make y'all aware of is if we get the phones in July, we won't be able to get any reimbursement for them, for the service, until September. The reason that is, is because all the technology has to be approved through the state, something they call an ADP plan. So that typically comes late July, is when we get approved early August. So if we got them the cell phones now, we would miss out on about thirty-five hundred dollars that would not be any reimbursement. We figured that into the budget, assuming that y'all would agree that we could go ahead and buy them, get them on the plans, because I think the sooner we could get them some protection out there in the field, the better off we are. I don't want to wait till something bad happens. I would rather take care of our staff now, if we could, because the Sheriff's Department, they're, they are wonderful to work with, but they can't go with us every time we go somewhere. So that's, I don't really, if y'all had a question about it, I'd be happy to answer it, but that was my thoughts, is to go ahead and get those plans going in July, if they had the phones ready.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Safety's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And make sure they're...
Next slide. So not to get too far in the weeds, but some things that we're working on in the finance department. Michael, our finance person, Michael Dodson, has been a one-man show since February. He did have a resignation, but actually, that person that resigned in February is coming back. So she'll be back at the end of June, which is good, so she's come back to the county, and she should be able to pick up right where she left off. And one thing I'm really pushing finance to do is be able to give you guys some real-time data. And what I mean real-time data, I mean last month, because when you're talking about state DSS, real time is last month, you know? But to be able to see how our reimbursements are coming in and how our expenses are coming in, because that's what I want to see. I want to be able to tell you that we've got this much reimbursement, and we've gotten this, we spent this much money. So you can see month to month how we're doing. I think that will keep us accountable, and it will also keep you informed on how our money's coming in on a regular basis. So that's something that we're really going to be pushing for starting in July, is to get that reporting up to speed, because we really don't have that infrastructure in place. So we really need that, so you guys can be informed. Let's see, is there anything else on finance? The other thing, this is not really finance, but this is kind of hot off the presses, so I wanted to bring it to y'all. So what you're looking at here, this kind of piggybacks off of what we were talking about with, I guess Zach was up there, we were talking about how they're expanding Medicaid one chunk at a time. There's a lot of buzz going on at the state level about Medicaid expansion. So I think there's, there's a really strong feeling that the legislature is going to expand Medicaid. The problem is, they just had the longest-long session, I think, in history. So it's expected that they'll pick this up on the short session when they come back. But anyway, if they expand Medicaid, as you can see, once it's fully implemented, that's another two thousand Medicaid cases in Alexander County. I just want y'all to know that this is on the horizon. If they pass it and we get that many more Medicaid cases, we're going to have to have some additional staff to handle that workload. So there's really nothing that we need to do now, but I didn't want this to be a surprise if it comes up in the short session and they approve a bill. The Senate already has an approved bill out there. I can't remember the number, but the, the House didn't pick it up. So if the House picks it up in the short session, then, you know, it's possible that they could expand it. There was a work requirement in there, but the, the federal government has continued to increase the amount that they're willing to pay states to expand Medicaid. And so it's getting more and more attractive for states to do this. And let's be honest, it is a, it's popular with the people, and this is an election year. So not to say that Medicaid is political, but everything is political. So, you know, I think this goes back to what Commissioner Lael was talking about, but they have expanded Medicaid with pregnant women, they have expanded Medicaid in lots of different areas. If the foster care plan goes through, that will be expanding Medicaid. So, you know, at, at some point, everybody's going to be covered one way or another, but as these Medicaid cases continue to grow, so will the demand for staff. So I just wanted to make you guys aware, aware of that. And any questions about any of that?
Good report. Sounds like things are trending the right way.
Yep, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. At this time, I would make a motion that we go into adjournment for closed session per North Carolina General Statute one, four, three, three, one, eight, dot, eleven, at four, five, and six, for economic development, contractual, and personnel. We will re-adjourn only for the purpose of adjournment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a second. Hall and page raised right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. We're now in closed session.